Let's go ahead and call this work-study session of the Albuquerque City Council's order. We have a couple of items on the agenda. The first item is the approval of study session summaries of the March 7 study session. Do I hear a motion?
So, vote.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none, or was in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, that carries on a five to zero vote. The next item is a discussion of the Citizens Police Oversight Agency and the transition issues, and then we'll be turning that over to Mr. Zamud. John?
Thank you, Mr. President. The councilors, I wanted to bring you up to speed on some things that the staff has been doing in anticipation of the CPOA being formed.
Sidney, John, did you want to go in?
Yeah.
Right now, the audience can go ahead and hear you also.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If you could turn the mics on, that would help too.
There are amplification.
There should be some amplification on. Thanks. Can you guys hear me now? Is that okay?
We can hear you, but it's not amplified.
But it's not amplified?
Not amplified.
Okay, we'll get that going. Okay. Okay, councilors, we wanted to talk to you about a couple of things today. The first is the process for soliciting applications for membership on the police oversight board. And the second is sort of general transition issues and how you would like us to move forward in preparing for the creation and the operation of the actual civilian police oversight agency. So with regard to the first issue, in the packet behind the presentation that's attached to the minutes, there's a four-page document that's called the Albuquerque Police Oversight Board Application. It's a document that is similar in a lot of respects to what we were asking of police oversight task force members. And what we were hoping to do was go live with this application on October 15 at 8:00 a.m. and leave the application online and open through November 30 at 5:00 p.m. So what we're hoping to do was have a 45-day application process where we solicit applications online. This will be on the front page of the city's website, it'll be on the city council page, it'll be on the CPOA page as well, and we'll also have paper applications if folks want to come in and just fill out a paper application. But we'll have this online for 45 days, and at the end of that process, staff, in this case, that would be me and Chris Melendres, our deputy, Julian Moya, Councilor Gardunio's assistant, Jessica Gonzalez, Councilor Winter's assistant, and Sarah Mancini, our special projects analyst, would be the team that would do the culling and the analysis of those We're also requiring a background check, which is something that we did for the police oversight task force as well. But in talking with the human resources department, we're going to approach the background checks slightly differently this time. As you may recall, last time, we had a bright line test for whether or not you passed through background or not. That was if there were any infractions whatsoever, you did not pass your background check. This time, on the advice of human resources, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be working on a case-by-case basis. What we don't want to do is set an objective standard that in some way works a bias against particular groups in the community. For example, certain minority groups are more likely to have criminal backgrounds or to have a police record than other ethnic groups, and we don't want to just categorically exclude them. What we want to be able to do is, with the help of HR, look at those situations on a case-by-case basis and make an evaluation about whether or not that hit on the background report should be disqualified. And so with that in mind, we expect to spend much of the month of December evaluating the applications, conducting interviews, we're soliciting references, so doing reference checks, and finally, towards the end of the month, making a recommendation to the full council for somewhere between 13 -- a pool of somewhere between 13 and 18 applicants that the council could then choose from in January for the final nine members of the POF. And so if that works for the council, if that's a direction that you'd like us to head, we can make that happen. We do have Miguel Navrat from the city's IT department here if you have any technical questions, or if you have any questions about the application itself, we'd be glad to answer.
So from the 13 to 18 applicants, we will be selecting nine members to the -- or is that right?
Selecting nine members, and those members have to broadly represent the city geographically. And there are a number of other minimum qualifications. They can have been employed by law enforcement for one year prior to their appointment. They have to have a personal history lacking any pattern of unsubstantiated complaints against APD. They have to be residents of the city of Albuquerque, and they have to have a demonstrated ability to engage in mature impartial decision-making. So I wanted to put that before you, and I also wanted to let you know that we're going to conduct a transparent application process, that all of the documents that we'll be receiving online will be open in public record and will be comparable, as will all of the notes and the work papers of the group that's doing the evaluations.
And basically, when you're going to be sending those names down to the council, you'll be providing the resumes of each one of the potential candidates?
Right. We could provide the resumes, we could provide the entire application packet, or we could just do a summary. I think what might work best, if the council's okay with this, is something that we did that's similar to what the redistricting committee went through, where we literally put up -- we put up a program that keeps track of gender and ethnicity and age and other categories, and then sort of interactively, the council can add and subtract to make sure that you're comfortable with the final balance.
Councilor Bennett?
So could you name the selection, or whatever we're calling it, the recommendation committee again, who they are?
Councilor B., myself, Chris Melendres, our deputy, the assistants to councilors Gardunio and Winter, so Julian Moya and Jessica Gonzalez, and also Sarah Mancini.
Well, I just want to ask a general question about that, because we had some late-night discussion on the night that this passed about whether there should be members of the community also represented on the -- because they are part of that along with staff. I think the amendment that felt was said something like two, three members from the And I'm not attempting, obviously, to revisit that or any possible amendments to the legislation here, but I will disclose that I'm interested in proposing some amendments to the legislation. Given that, and given that it is very important that this process of selection be as transparent as possible, I have a question, which is, and I understand that these are the two sponsors, policy analysts, but would they be specifically prohibited from speaking to their councilors or other councilors while this process is going on? Are we trying to -- are we -- do we intend to do anything during this process that would perhaps do that? I mean, I'm just putting it out there as a question.
Yeah.
I mean, let's say my policy analyst is around there, I'd be tempted to say, "Well, how's it going? You see people you like on there?" And then she's maybe said, "Oh, you know, so-and-so does look like to us."
I think we were fortunate in that regard, because when we were doing the POF, members, both the councilors and the sponsors of that legislation, went out of their way not to interfere yet, to just be completely hands-off, and so staff felt completely at liberty.
Right. And John, if I could, Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt, that I think in general, that's the way the council -- so just so the public knows, that is the way the council generally operated on this thing. Yeah, from time to time, the council is on a selection committee for a consultant or something like that, but there's not a lot of background buzz. This is a big issue, you know, and it's a -- it's a -- just the process of weeding down the names and whittling it down to a group that then would be discussed publicly at council meeting by the council, and it'd be in front of everybody on the here, and I think that's fine. But just, these are sort of some thoughts that that concerns.
Councilor Woodson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Councilor Bennett, and I absolutely agree. I have no interest in being involved at that level, and I don't think Councilor Gardunio or I even got involved in the picking the task force, but you don't have to worry. I have no interest in that. You know, I don't know if we want to have an observer. I don't know how you, a public observer, to observe the process. I don't know. That's an option.
We didn't have that, obviously, as far as something, but... And Mr. President, I wasn't meaning to imply at all that you guys would do that. But the human nature on something this big, without having stated that, then it might occur. And something like an observer, or whatever, that we might be talking about or thinking of, wasn't part of the legislation, but there's nothing to prevent the council service from deciding to do something like that, not at this meeting, because this is not our deciding body, but having something worth discussing.
And it's very important, Mr. President, that this is very transparent, that it is, you know, the process that we're going through is however they're going to pick the candidates that come to us, and that's when the discussion needs to come plays. And that's the first time that I want to hear about who's going to be up for those positions.
Councilor Gardunio?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm glad we're discussing this, because I've said it many times, and I'll say it again. At one point, I was very adamant about the members of the POF and, not including the board, be appointed by the councilors like had been in the past. And I was convinced, especially after the process with the POF, that it worked so well. And I think it was a process where, literally, I never asked Julian, and Julian went out of his way, so Moya, and he went out of his way to make sure that there was no interference, if you want to call it that, that it was really something that happened within that realm. And I didn't know until the very last who the members might have been. So I thought it was such a system that I relinquished my, you know, jaw lock on the idea of me being one of the appointed first, and thought, if that worked so well for the POF, I think it would work well also for the board. So I was very supportive of that, and I want to make sure that people understand that I think also, like the rest of you are saying, that council party should be removed more than our staff. In fact, that arm should be cut off if they try to reach out and influence the system. But I also agree with you, Councilor Bennett, that there ought to be some, it's not a voting member, maybe an observer, as Councilor Winter said, someone that the committee thinks, you know, we need somebody in there that is looking at things, that feels uncomfortable with the way things are going. And if that body, those folks, wants to make that public person, that community person a voting member, that's up to them. But I think that would lend towards what you're alluding to, which is even more transparency, even more clarifying what goes on. I think the only reason that, from my viewpoint, why both analysts were chosen, and obviously the two people that we've talked about, Chris Melendres and Melendres, was that it's sort of an internal process, that they would be able to gather the information, call through it, and vet the folks according to the criteria. But I agree with you, and I would support, again, in the next venue where we'd be able to vote on it, some system that would allow the community more access, more view of the process. And who that would be, I don't know.
Councilor Gibson?
I guess I just want to add to that a little bit, that I have not seen or have seen since till it that evidence that any councilor has been putting any pressure on their particular representative on the POC, but I do appreciate the fact that, you know, the perception could possibly be there, maybe in the past or going forward from now. So we have to use that same line of thinking in how we, you know, flesh out this board, correct the members, get members appointed to the board. And, you know, I don't have a policy analyst on it, so, and that's fine. I think that I have utmost confidence in John and the other staff who will be on that. And I don't know if, I guess, you know, what, I guess the question in my mind is, what would make people comfortable in seeing how this is? Should it be an overseer, or should it be? I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Councilor Gardunio, then, Councilor Bennett, and I've got a couple of comments.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. President?
Let me first begin by saying that I like what Councilor Bennett is saying regarding, and I don't like the idea of bringing in an observer. I think if they're going to be part of the process, they should be able to vote on who's going to, whose name is going to come forth, and we need to make some amendments in the bill, and we need to do it quickly. But I think the process, the last time, where Mr. Gardunio and the staff worked on this, I think they did their due diligence, and the individuals that served in the task force, I think they were outstanding citizens in our community and did a great job. So I feel the process will be fair, it will be equitable, and every individual in this community has that opportunity. If they've got a background problem, that's going to also be vetted through HR, or if it was 25, 30 years ago, and today they're an outstanding citizen in this community, they will also have that opportunity to serve. But I do think that we need to bring in a couple of individuals from the public that need to be part of this process to entrust the entire community to be, you know, feel like they've got some input, and it's not just a ninth-floor decision, because we've got to bring some outside individuals in to let the public know that the process is going to be fair, it's going to be equitable, and everyone has that opportunity to apply. Councilor Gardunio, and then Councilor Bennett?
Well, I was just going to reflect on that also. Ed, I have to tell you, and I'm sure the rest of you have also received concerns, communications about the process and how's it going to be, and the way we had it, I think it was flexible, and I think with that flexibility comes the ability to put in some folks that would be from the community, because I think community folks were telling me, and I'm sure, as I say, the rest of you, that, how do we know this is not an inside job? And maybe it wasn't said quite though in that way, but, you know, it alluded to that. And whatever we can do to allay those concerns, to make sure that we have participation from a place that this is all about, this is a, you know, citizens' police complaint system. And if we don't involve citizens, then I think we're leaving out a major part of who should be deciding on this. But I think they should have a look.
Councilor Bennett, then, Councilor Woodson, then we go to Mr. Zamud?
I have a quick question, and I have a comment about how this might proceed. Will this be by a committee vote? Committee votes, five people, and so there's a vote taken. Is that how it's going to go?
Well?
When you're whittling?
You know, when we were doing it.
When you get down to push and shove. I know that there's a first kind of, they're all laid out there, and, but I think when it gets time to actually start whittling down the list, is that done by a vote of the committee, of this group of five?
Mr. Chairman, Councilor Bennett, no. The way we've done it in the past is just we operated by consensus.
Consensus.
And when we disagreed, we just, we talked about it until we all got comfortable with the consensus decision.
Gotcha.
In this case, if we are going to sort of formalize a voting process, we need to be, you know, obviously careful of the number, so we don't end up, you know, potentially at 4-4 or something like that. We also want to make sure that we select folks who don't also want to apply to be board members, and that's probably goes without saying, but if they're on the selection committee days, they can't apply.
Right.
And then we're going to want to, we're almost talking about sort of POB light, because you're going to want to find a couple of observers or a couple of voting members that represent the community, and how do you create the process to select those two members that broadly represent the community?
Right. And again, what you've described has been my experience of how the council kind of selects people to do various things when there are applicants involved. Councilor Winter and I were part of just the process when we selected the members of the Behavioral Health Task Force, which was kind of an interesting process, but went very quickly and smoothly, and it was done, and it was done, and it was done. And I think that's what we want. And I did oppose the idea that there would be, that we would appoint a citizen body that would then appoint a citizen body. Well, to me, that was just, okay, well, how long can we draw the process out, just considering that there was some controversy, some people didn't like what came out when we created the task force, the oversight task force. Here's a thought. What if the task force says, I guess it's either one or three, or no, no, we already have, it would be two people, it would sort of be a good number, because we have ten now.
Five.
So then you're then, you know, if it did come to a vote, then you have seven, but hopefully you do consensus process.
Councilor Woodson?
Mr. Chair, members committee, yeah, the whole point is, and I agree about the observers or board members, I don't have an issue with that. It's how you're going to, how you're going to decide who that is in the community, because I think someone will probably feel left out, and, you know, well, you don't represent. So I guess we've got to be very careful in how we do that. Maybe, you know, the task force, one thing I'd say about that, it was a broad group, maybe they read, I don't know how the public would feel about it, but maybe they just reconvene and send two people, whether they're on that task force or not, I don't know, I guess they could make that decision, but...
My whole point is, and I think everybody, as far as the nine-member group, I just want it to be very diverse, folks that are dedicated to, you know, having a civilian oversight. So that's what's important to me, and I think that was important to the task force, that you have something that represents a community, so that might be an idea. So if you're going to do an amendment, I think you can discuss more, come up, but that might be an idea.
But if they were starting to take the applicants on the 15th, probably at the next meeting, we need to move for immediate action to get it, get it published.
Yes. And, Mr. President, in response to that, if there was a vote taken, I don't remember what the vote was, or if, it's almost as though one of the people voted against it would want to have to reconsider.
Well, I mean, if it's a new proposal, that doesn't...
If this, let me just do, I'd say a resolution that would be new.
Just amending the ordinance.
Well, I'm not even sure you need to amend the ordinance.
Just describing this.
Describing the process.
Right. And we have the chairman here of the police oversight task force. Do you think you could convene and get the members back together again to look at possibly two members?
You know, I can't speak for everyone, but my sense is they'd be, probably be willing to come back together. But if I can make an additional comment, I think what you're wrestling with, the heart of that matter is what's come up towards the end here, and why you're asking me, how is that, who selects the two citizen people, and how does that get done? It's the same concerns about how the POB gets selected and how the POF was selected. Who's going to do the selecting? There were two reasons why we felt that a citizen group was going to be okay as a selection body, and that the staff would be okay as a selection body. So let me quickly describe them. We were recommending a citizen group so that it was completely removed from everybody, so that there wouldn't be that question, well, are the councilors influencing your staff? When it came back twice to us that the council still wanted to appoint people, we came up, we said, "We can't give them the same information back again, because they've already shot it down twice, in the original recommendation and in the July recommendation." So when we were going to send back the same thing again, but we decided, you know what, like you guys were talking about, the staff process worked pretty well, and they were okay with that, council was okay with that, so let's send that back to them. That was, seemed to be, as you've all recognized, a fair process. Now, there was some conversation about that out in the community and stuff, was it an inside, all those things that you're coming up with. But I don't know, it's a ticklish thing to come up with who the observers are going to be and how they're selected. So it's almost like you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. I don't think there's any way to satisfy everybody's concerns about the selection process.
I'm going to go to Councilor Gardunio, then we'll go to Mr. Zamud, and then we'll go to Councilor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Chairman, Lippman is right when he says that you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. But given that, I think you're damned...
That's always the English last word.
That would be the quote.
Then, you're damned better do a good job. So, given that, I think, you know, the best thing to do is, what we're saying here is, throw it back to the POF, and if they're willing to wrestle with that, I think they have more credibility from the community than if we did it or anyone else. I'm not saying they're better folks than we are, however, I think they are. But they have a better policy, let's say, than we would, because we already are tainted with the fact that we are a known quantity, if you will. While they, I think, have done an amazing job at the work that they did, and going forward, with the two folks that they would come up with, I think they should be voting on not observers, I think the community would nod their head a lot stronger than if any other system were to be put in place. And certainly, we don't have the time to come up with another POF to do that kind of work. So I agree with you, Mr. President, that if we could convince the existing POF to do the work, it'd be great.
Mr. Zamud?
Just a couple of thoughts, Mr. Chairman. First, just procedurally, as Chris just pointed out, if we're going to make these voting members, then we probably do have to amend the ordinance. If they're just going to be observers or participating in a consensus, then we can probably just do it by resolution. Regardless of what the council decides, I can tell you that the staff's, you know, the staff's perspective on this is that we're going to run this open and participatory and transparent process as we can. And to that end, if the council wants, we can even, to the extent that we can, we can even have our deliberations and our meetings in public. You know, we can have them here and allow people to, allow the community to observe if that helps, or if that's something that you all want to consider.
Councilor Gibson?
Well, I appreciate your saying that, and I think that would, I think that'd be beneficial
and probably welcomed by a lot of folks in the public. I wanted to just talk about the, it sounds like we're, feels like we're getting to the chicken and the egg, you know, as far as bringing in either participating voting two members to the process, or, you know, it's a physical. So what about this? What if we charged the task force with just selecting two of their members, since there's already been quite an exhaustive process by which task force members were selected? They've already been vetted, agreed upon, served very honorably.
Councilor Bennett?
And that was what I was suggesting, really, and alluding to, as being a prejudious way, and I know it does, obviously, there, these have been great volunteers who've really worked hard. I do respect them, if they collectively come up with a couple of people that would be on here. And if it were up to me, since it's not voting, it's funny to call it a voting member if it's a consensus process, but I think in the short term, to keep the process moving forward, we could do this by resolution, and then I could float it out there. If I've got some amendments to the ordinance later, then we can talk about it more after this. It would be for the future.
And one thing I'd like to point out there that might help the discussion or the comfort level with consensus is that ultimately, the council decides who's going to be on the police oversight board, and they're not going to do that just based on... the police oversight board, and they're not going to do that just based on nine names that are submitted to the council as a benefit.
Right.
We're going to submit a group of 13 to 18, and if necessary, to give the council the most latitude, we could increase that. Obviously, we don't want to drop the whole thing on you, want to do some vetting, but there is going to be some latitude for you to decide within our recommendations. And there's going to be some latitude for the selection group to add folks who may not have consensus but who may be very good and in-qualified candidates.
Another technical question. If we were to, if this selection group were to meet publicly, in my experience, you know, when we go through these names, I mean, there's some kind of personal, a little bit offline type discussion, and I don't know whether that should be occurring in a public meeting about, I mean, because you're talking about individuals and their history and their life history, and there's a need for some frankness in that type of situation that might involve people's personal privacy.
And we've got to be very careful. And I'm not sure if the committee could go into executive session to discuss personnel issues, but that does create some problems, I believe.
So something to think about before we write a resolution.
And especially because we'll be dealing with background checks.
Right.
Okay, John, let's go and proceed.
Okay. Well, with that, I think the staff has direction, and so the plan at this point is for the applications to be online for 45 days, beginning October 15th and ending November 30th at 5:00 p.m. And that will be entirely automated, so folks can come in and fill out a paper application.
And also, if you could, also let the four council members that are absent today weigh in and hopefully discuss.
Sure, yeah, I'll get this document to them, they can also, you know, talk about process as well, and then I'll bring that back.
Before we go to Mr. Zamora, do people have this information?
And if not, can we?
We can get out earlier.
I think it'd be important for people to see this, because it's very exhaustive as to what it's asking as far as the application, and we struggled with this because at one point, Mr. Zamora and I met, because I thought I wasn't going to be able to make this meeting, but I was able to. So there are a lot of questions that are asked here, but one of the things that we also wanted to make sure is that we didn't scare people off by having a multi-page, you know, application. But that was one of the fairest ways that we, that I thought could be done, and that's why I wish everybody could have a copy, if they don't, they'll make it available to them, so that they see that we're making every, if they don't, we can, to make sure that this is fair, it's exhaustive, at the same time, it doesn't scare people off. Thank you.
Let's proceed, John.
Okay, there are a couple of other issues that I was hoping we could have a discussion about and maybe tease out some of the details. They all relate to the transition, we're in this transition period where we've, the council has just approved an ordinance that did away with technically the IRO. We're in a period where the CPOA hasn't been formed, the POB has not been impaneled, and yet we've got a process that continues to actively encourage and solicit civilian police complaints. We've also got, if everything goes as planned in the application process, by January or February, we'll have an impaneled police oversight board, and we're going to need the framework of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency in place when they're impaneled. So the question is really twofold, and that is, what does the council want to do, what direction would you give us about what you want to do with the existing CPC process, and what do you want to do in preparation for the creation of the CPOA? There seem to be a few options available. The one is, we do have the former IRO, as we're in the ordinance, and she continues to oversee her staff. She does have, Ms. Hammer, correct me if I'm wrong, seven positions, six staff members within the IRO's office, yourself included?
That's correct.
Okay. And those positions have employment rights, so that, you know, they can't be kicked to the curb. Someone has to oversee them and someone has to oversee the process. It's possible that we could have the existing IRO do that and also help with logistics and the formation of the agency itself. On the other end of things, we, the council could hire an executive director interim and ask that person to oversee the current CPC process as well as help to create the agency. Or the council could direct some sort of hybrid, which might be that Ms. Hammer continue to oversee the CPC process until the agency is in place, but we hire an organizational specialist or someone to actually, to create the framework for the new agency. And so really, what I wanted to do today was sort of get your thoughts on that issue and give us direction, how to proceed.
Councilor Dune?
What about the, didn't we pass a resolution keeping, creating an interim situation? So for current cases, that's still in effect, correct?
Right.
So that required a hearing officer. Has there been any progress made in hiring a hearing officer?
Can you tell us?
Ms. Hammer?
The hearing officer is, there's an agency through the C called the Alternative Dispute Resolution Division, and that's the agency that we've been in contact with for any need for hearing officers.
Okay. And you have a docket, right? So, that.
Right.
That's the system under which we're.
There's a set of persons who have appeals, and that's what the hearing officer would hear.
Right, so, Mr. President, is there, are there appeals in the docket?
No, we wanted to see the direction that it was going, because I think, I don't have that, your ordinance that was passed, O-15, I don't believe I have that in front of me, but there was some language that this process was in place until new legislation was passed. And so the question is.
Do we need to extend that?
Do we need to extend it?
While this is actually in formation, I think, Councilors, that would be pretty interesting to discuss that as well, perhaps at the next meeting. Can the existing legislation just be amended and extended, or?
I think we'd need to extend it if that's the way that you want to.
I mean.
Extend the, I'm sorry, Councilor.
Extend.
The interim process.
Yes, extend that interim process while we're in formation here, because I don't think we want to in any way preclude the process of appeal and CPCs while we're in formation of the new body.
Councilor Dune?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that's absolutely true. The last thing we want to send out as a message, there's going to be hiatus of whatever, a month, two months, three months, and all of you citizens who have complaints will have to wait until then. I think we need to make sure that there's a process that goes forward, but is as vigorous and as robust as we can make it until we have the other system in place. And we continue forward with what we have for citizens to feel like they don't have the weight or don't feel like they are being neglected until some time in the future.
Mr. President? Just to finish that aspect of it, because I know we're asking another question, John, with regard to formation and the role of the office beyond CPCs and appeals and investigations. We might also need in such a resolution or such an amendment, some language with regard to keeping, you know, the transferal of these existing complaints to the new system at the appropriate time.
So let me ask Chris this question legally, with the legislation that we just passed in the ordinance, we have formed now an executive director. We're going through this transition period. Does the IRO still exist in this case? Because I know that Councilor Dune and I had legislation that we passed that we would continue with the hearing officer to give the public the opportunity to vent their complaints, but now with a new piece of legislation in place in the POB, we don't have an IRO, is that correct? Or we do have an IRO?
Mr. President, that is correct, but I think, just to explain it a little bit deeper, I don't think the ordinance as adopted is self-executing. So we would need to build up our process to a point to where we could shift into that place of being ready for an executive director. And so by virtue of the ordinance being adopted does not necessarily sort of undercut the process as it exists today, at least until the time we have sort of some infrastructure to make it function fully in the way that it was intended to.
So basically, in the interim, we're trying to keep that infrastructure in place until we build up to the point where we can, they can hire an executive director and continue on this process.
Mr. President, I think, I think that's correct, and so the idea is, is how do we ensure that all of the current workings of that office are flowing so that folks still have an opportunity to engage themselves in that process and then transition later, you know, into the new system.
And I support that, I think that needs to be done. That's one of the things that I guess staff can work on with Ms. Hammer?
I think so.
Can, Mr. Chairman, continuing the existing process under the terms of the bill that the council already passed?
Yeah.
Okay, and then in terms of, in terms of preparing the infrastructure for the new CPOA, for the new agency, really, the only reason I brought it up was whether or not the council feels that it needs a fresh start with regard to the direction of the CPOA, or whether or not it's comfortable that the current staff can put together the CPOA consistent with the ordinance.
Councilor Dune, Councilor Dune, then Councilor Witter?
I would not be just adamantly opposed to that, however, I think the council would need to kind of create some reporting requirements where we are kept very much abreast of how that's proceeding.
And just for clarity, what staff are we talking about?
The IRO and her staff. Now, to be fair, the things that need to be created are rules and a training regimen and sort of the day-to-day framework of the CPOA, and the bulk of that, in terms of describing the process and the day-to-day operations of the CPOA, are probably fairly well put together at this point through the existing rules. So I would think it would be more, you know, minor modifications to existing documents, rules and procedures than it would be a full overhaul.
Which would lend itself to the expertise of existing staff.
I mean, I know there have been disagreements and so forth with the previous board and all that, but talking about, you know, internal organizational workings, I think, you know, I'd be inclined, unless somebody demonstrates otherwise, that they're the appropriate people to be doing this. Like I said, it's my own qualification, we have some regular reporting to council.
Councilor Dune?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say, so.
And I feel the same way, I think that we've got to have that institutional knowledge, especially for this transition. Here we are now in October, we're looking at creating that new board in January of next year, so there's not a lot of time. So I think bringing somebody new and just puts us further behind, I think it's too important to lose that knowledge, at least through this process.
Mr. Chairman, is it the council's desire to have council staff work closely with Ms. Hammer and her group as the process comes together?
I don't have a problem with that, but again, I think you need to speak to the four council members that are present also to get their input.
Let's proceed.
Mr. Chairman, that was it. I actually expected that one to take a little bit longer, but that was it. What I wanted to let you know is that we'll keep you involved and apprised every step of the way. There'll be a 45-day sort of gap of silence in terms of the applications through the end of November, but obviously, we'll be consulting with you.
Councilor Dune?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zamora, I've heard some of it in how you're going to reach out to folks in the community. What are the avenues, what are we doing? I know that Sarah's going to be probably doing a lot of online work, but are we going to advertise it some other way or let people know?
We're working to develop a campaign for how to roll it out. At this point, we're really going to be, you know, all over the city's website. We're hoping to do some Gov. 16 interviews and broadcasts. We're hoping to be able to advertise, hopefully, the Journal will be kind and give us some advertising space in the Journal for free, just to make it known there. We're actually hoping for a pretty significant bump of free press on, you know, broadcast stations and in the Journal as the process rolls out. So that, and we're open to any suggestions you might have.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Zamora, one of the things I was thinking about is that obviously, the PTOF is already a formed entity, and maybe they have some idea of how that could happen. But also, folks who are very interested, there are a lot of community folks here right now, who, it might be good to have a conversation with them and ask them, what avenues can we use to get to people that you think need to hear this and should be involved in applying or letting the word out? And I can see some folks right now who would be more than willing to do that, and I'm sure Mr. Gomez, Vargas, and Mr. Harrison, whoever wants to help us out, if we would engage their help.
Sure. I think, I left out a big group as well, and that's the councils themselves and their policy analysts going to the neighborhood meetings and coalition meetings, and, you know, being out there in the neighborhoods on a consistent basis, I think that'll be a powerful marketing tool as well.
And they're really knows it too.
This is a work-study session, we've got a few more minutes, we will allow, normally we don't allow for any public comment during any study session, but we can open it up for five minutes to allow for some comments. Mr. Gomez, have you had your hand raised up?
Well, I'm just, you know, volunteering for being a public person to be in action with this new POB ordinance. And, you know, Charlie here is good at getting stuff out to the public, too. So, you know, if you need someone to get out to the, in the trenches, we're the ones to do it.
Thank you. Lippman?
Yeah, I think all of those things should be utilized and all of everybody's email lists should be encouraged for distribution, but the key thing is really going to be the TV news. I would, you know, highly urge you to consider doing a press conference to release this to the public. Do all the other things as well, but it's got to be on the TV. I mean, it can be in the paper six times, and people will say, I didn't see it anywhere, it wasn't on TV. So I would urge you to do whatever you can to make sure that the regular news gets it.
Ms. Vargas?
I was just going to suggest that, I mean, I get that mainstream media and the paper and news and stuff is, is how the most amount of people are going to go, but there are a lot of, like, community radios and stuff, and perhaps it might be a good idea to reach out to some community radio personalities and, like, grassroots journalism, for one, to include them, and two, perhaps, community relations or PR or building, whatever we want to call it.
And we'll have our staff work on that, see who can get out. If you have any recommendations of, you know, outlets that you want to see involved, that'd be great.
Go ahead. Ms. Chinamal?
Oh, yes, to augment that, I would recommend KUNM Radio, KANW, also KNME TV.
There are public venues.
And also.
And burka media.
This may be a somewhat rhetorical question, why is there no money going to be put into media advertising?
Well, we can reach out to media, and hopefully, they won't get involved, but I think this is such an important process to our community that they will get engaged, get involved, and be part of the process.
And some funding be appropriated to get the word out through the media?
Well, we'll make the phone calls, we'll have our staff contact the different stations to try to get them involved, and then it'll be the manager to make that decision, but I like the idea that Ms. Vargas and yourself, Ms. Chinamal, brought up.
Mr. Wygant?
I just think if the task force is going to be involved in picking citizen, you know, community people to be involved in the. people to be involved in the POV selection process, I think we're better placed to recommend people from the community than to recommend ourselves. I think we were criticized for not being sufficiently from the community, and I think that probably is a legitimate criticism of me. I don't think I did a bad job, but I think that would be a legitimate criticism of, for example, my selection. But I think we've heard a lot from the community, and we would do a reasonable job of picking people from the community, and that would be better than to pick two among our number.
I think that's a decision that you guys can, you know, come together, if you want to pick outside people, not on the task force, or if somebody on the task force wants to serve on, you guys have given already a lot of your time.
We can hash it out.
Okay. The wisdom of the group comes up. Right. Bill?
I don't know if this is within the scope of what you had in mind, but I would like to see more emphasis continue to be placed on the front end of the process, of the oversight process. And I think that's been one of the objections to the ordinance as it's passed, is that there's not enough time or resources devoted toward the oversight, toward the front end, and which, and I'm interested in seeing policy changes within APD. And so I would encourage the council to at least keep this on their agenda, to revisit and amend this ordinance, even, you know, start thinking about amendments straight from the front end of this.
And it's one of the things that we did amend, is I think one of the amendments included 51% of the work by the Board would be for policy.
Well, I think, in addition to that, I think one of the things that's lacking is a direct input from the police oversight board to the chief or to APD to make their recommendations more than just suggestions. And I think that's the way the ordinance kind of reads that way. It's up to the, you know, the police chief has to justify why he does or doesn't accept recommendations of the board, but I think there has to be a stronger, stronger language there. I think it should, for example, I don't believe it should be the decision of the police chief to have, to further militarize the police. I think that's a community decision. And I think that if we had a task force or an oversight commission that had, could make those recommendations, the chief, things like militarization just wouldn't happen to the extent that it's happened. So that, I mean, the outside of the scope of what you had in mind.
Thank you for your input. Again, Counselor Corinna?
In response to that, I think you're right, that there should be more policy review, analysis, whatever, and recommendation, but I think ultimately it should come back to us so that it becomes legislation. So otherwise, if it's just a policy, we know that policies are sometimes, legislation is sometimes set aside, but at least legislation would have a little, as you say, more tea to it than just a policy recommendation.
Is there a mechanism, I didn't read, haven't read closely enough of the word, but I mean, is there a mechanism for the PO, from the oversight board to feedback to the council?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And to make policy recommendations to the city council to enact ordinance.
So if everything's working the way we hope, we'll receive policy recommendations from the council, from the POV, and enact them, whatever, have the legal checks on them and all that stuff, and enact them. Then the question becomes, who is, to whom is the police leadership answerable? And that's when my feeling is, and it's no secret, so I think we're not making any decision by me saying this, is that the additions that Counselor Sanchez and I got passed to put on the ballot to have advice and consent on the chief at the council, forces the council to take on a greater responsibility as to police policy with the help of the POV, and requires that the leadership be answerable to us and not only to the mayor as to how they're operating. That's, that would be a public vote, and I think appropriately, that would be a public change to our city charter that's worth making, and it's too bad we didn't get it on the ballot. You know, I don't hold it against, by the way, the county that that didn't make it on the ballot. We all knew that there was a problem with the length of the ballot going in, and they made a decision, and it was theirs to make, and I don't hold it against them, but I think we've got to get that on the ballot ASAP. But hopefully, February, so talk to your state representatives, tell them we need to change state laws so that we can put municipal questions on and make PS develop.
And that'll be a constitutional amendment in November, so go out and vote yes. Any other questions in this council? If not, this...
I'm just, I'm really curious, as I'm listening to the work study, I'm glad you guys are actually taking the time to have a work study regarding this very serious issue, but one thing I didn't hear addressed in this work study is how this council feels or what initiatives are going to be taken to get around the collective bargaining agreement that this legislation is in directly violation of. What was that taken into consideration at all upon passing this legislation?
And that's why it was voted in the way, and we did include some amendments that did protect some of the rights of the officers regarding Garrity. I mean, you may not feel it's enough, and I know Counselor Harris had a bill and an amendment in there that dealt with the collective bargaining, that the majority of the council, I think, was at a torn vote, voted against that legislation. But I'm, you know, I'm sure that we are going to make sure that the police officers, the unions are involved in this process, because we want to make sure that they can also buy into some of these changes that we are looking at. This has to work both for the officers and for the community.
So, so to that, and I'm sure that you all, you have seen this already, but the ordinance does state that POV may review Garrity material or confidential material only in closed sessions permitted under the Open Meetings Act. So anything about...
And by a vote of, and by a vote of the POV board, that's, was one of the amendments that we added in there.
Garrity is going to be an extremely broad issue that a broad sort and a broad litigation is going to have to address, but I'm talking about the simple violations of the contract in regards to the chief having sole authority, over-discipline, the officers and their identities being kept out of this particular system, personnel files of a police officer being out of the hands of this particular system, the time lapse that the citizen has to file a complaint, an anonymous complaint. There are a lot of issues that are in direct violation of the collective bargaining agreement that we just signed and we just passed in July of 2014, and before we get into the actual legal arguments of Garrity and how this is a violation of Garrity on the forefront of this entire process, you've got major violations of a collective bargaining agreement. Constitutional law and state law state you can't enact legislation that is in violation of a contract that is enacted within this city.
Let me ask our legal advisor a question. If and when the consent decree is filed with the courts, doesn't that trump any contract, Ms. Lindros?
Mr. President, you know, I'm going to answer your question, but I'm going to maybe take an indirect route, if that's okay. You know, there's, these issues were presented to the council, and these issues are dealt with by the ordinance. So the council has spoken with respect to how the ordinance will treat these issues. The ordinance, at this point, has not been imposed in the manner that the union thinks is in conflict with its collective bargaining agreement. Until we get to that time, we're not going to have resolution to those questions. On one end of the spectrum, I don't think the intent, or I think we would be on, I think it'd be reasonable for us to say that the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, we cannot trump that through regulation that was adopted subsequent to the signing of that agreement. So that agreement's in place for its term. To answer your question, yeah, I think there is precedent for the idea that if the city is subject to a court-enforceable consent decree that includes these oversight provisions, that we would have a strong basis to enforce those, notwithstanding the contract. So, you know, I think any way you slice it, there's going to be a disagreement on those things, and we may have to litigate those changes. But I think that we have a basis for doing what the city did, heard the arguments, the ordinance addresses those conflicts. When we get to the point of enforcing those issues, then we'll have to deal with it at that time as to how it's settled.
Okay. Any other questions by this council? If not, the study session is over.